Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 2, 2022, meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti.
Tammy Trantallas, Administrator Assistant.
Tom Turente.
Paul Kaplan.
Judy Smith.
Jack Demergen, Zoning Administrator.
Okay, good. We have every reason to believe Commissioner Cornell will be with us. He's just running a little late, I guess. Before we get started, just one thing I'd like to do. I'd like to switch two items on our agenda this evening, just to give Robin an earlier night. I think we can get our public hearing out of the way quickly, and then we'll leave -- that'll leave our -- the application for the medical office building. So on somebody's motion, let's switch items six and seven on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been -- there's a motion to make the change to the agenda. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Good. Thank you. All right. On the first item on the agenda is the minutes from the July 5, 2022, meeting. Does everybody have those minutes? Had a chance to look at them?
Yeah, I've got no comments.
No comments?
Nothing here.
No comments?
Nope.
All right, neither do I. Looks like they're all set to go. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, so moved.
We have a second?
Second.
And one abstention. I wasn't there.
And you're abstaining. All right, so all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And one abstention, Judy. Okay. All right. Next item on our agenda is old business. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up under that subject? I wanted to talk about the marijuana. You want to talk about that when we get to your report?
Sure.
Why don't we do that?
Whatever works.
Because I saw that application came in.
Yeah, yep.
And it looks like we're going to be hearing that application in September.
Correct.
Okay. So nothing under old business. How about new business? No? Nothing? Okay. Now, let's go to the report of the zoning enforcement officer.
Sure. I'm sure everybody's been seeing. We have a couple notices that have been going out, as well as fines. It's kind of that time of the year where neighbors are calling in and seeing stuff, you know, that they normally wouldn't during other times of the year, so we have been getting an abundance of that. So we're sure to stay on top of it. I spoke a couple times about the winery application that's going to come in. They did submit, so we will hopefully be hearing that at our next meeting.
Give me the --
Yeah, so extra parking, some outdoor seating arrangements, and lighting on the property as well.
So I should have brought this up under old business, but I'm glad you raised it. Have we been getting any complaints from any of the neighbors regarding their usage?
No, no, not as of recently. And I have gotten, actually, an abundance of letters in support of the application.
Yeah, it's a very popular place. I'm just concerned about the neighbors at all, you know.
Right, and we are putting it to public hearings, so they will have an opportunity to come out.
Okay.
Yep. Another application that will be coming in is the gas station on Route 34. That is just for a site plan and the canopy change. They're going to be switching the pumps, as well as the canopy. We're looking to -- really would only constitute an administrative review. Like I said, it's only the canopy and the pumps. They want to make it a little easier access off the road, as well as getting back onto 34. And then for cannabis. I know there's a little bit of confusion. If everybody remembers, November of last year, we put it in the moratorium on any cannabis applications. The application that we received is a text amendment to the moratorium. So it's not a site plan or a special use application that's coming in because, at the moment, we don't allow -- we're not accepting such applications. This application is to change the text that we implemented last year for cannabis retailers. So it's an application that we do have to hear.
Well, it's not even regarding the moratorium. It's regarding the -- it's amendment of the actual --
It is. It's a moratorium and creating their own regulation in order to allow for that sort of use.
The moratorium is part of the regulations.
Right.
Is actually, you know, and so what this does is it basically suggests that we delete the moratorium, you know, take it out of the regulations. And then it lays out new regulations for the, you know, that apply to cannabis establishments. So it has -- I don't know if you had a chance to look at the proposed regulations, but it has a lot of the stuff that we talked about, you know.
I assume it's similar to the regulation that was proposed that we put on moratorium?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But it, you know, it calls for a special permit, you know, so the -- and, you know, it lays out standards for the special permit.
Correct, yeah.
And it talks about, you know, distance from churches and places of worship, schools, all that stuff. So if, you know, as I remember, what we said we were going to do is we had three choices. We were either going to ban it outright, or we were going to regulate it. And the third option was to do nothing, which would have meant that it could be -- that use could be made of the property, of a property.
Right.
Without any regulation. Oh, it'd be a permitted use, permitted as of right. So I think we were -- there was a consensus amongst us that we weren't going to do that. We were either -- I don't know, and I don't know where we lined up as far as banning it outright or regulating it, but I think, you know, that's where we were. So this application is going to put that to the test.
Have any of the -- Have any of the surrounding towns had reason to deal with this already?
No, because the licensing is so new that nobody has really had a chance to really establish a retailer yet. So it's still a little bit early for us to see how it's gone in other places. I know they have given some licenses, but in order to get your license from the state, you have to include your location in town that you are planning on going. So you can't even submit an application to the state unless you have municipal approval for a site in town.
So, yeah, or contingent on getting the approval, you know, the permit from the state. So that's what that's about. I didn't understand that, you know, at first read.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, it's an amendment to the regulations. We're not accepting, you know, an application to -- for that use. We're accepting an application to amend the regulations.
We amended our regs with the moratorium. They are trying to amend the regulations to get rid of the moratorium.
And that's all a public hearing.
So a public hearing, and it'll be in September?
September. I did send notices to regional planning authorities, so that's what we're waiting on now.
I mean, unfortunately, I mean, we haven't really -- the whole idea behind the moratorium was that we were going to try to learn something from other towns.
Right.
And we didn't -- I don't know that we've learned anything.
Have they adopted regs?
I know some of the town attorney's other municipalities have allowed it. I don't think any of them have really had anyone open just yet.
Right.
So it is still a little bit early -- it is still a little bit early on that end, but I thought he was going to tell me my mic was off. So it is a little, you know, we don't have that much input as of yet, but...
All right. So we're going to get a good look at it in September.
We sure are.
All right. And you have the proposed reg changes were emailed to everybody, so you should all have that.
Yeah, and if anybody wants me to email it again, I'd be happy to do so tomorrow.
All right. Anything else under your report, Jack?
Um, I don't know. I think that was it.
All right. Any questions for Jack? All right. Next item on our agenda is a request by the New Haven Hebrew Day School to extend the time limit to use and occupy temporary classrooms. This was last extended on June 16, 2020. The extension brought it out to August 1, 2022. You're here.
I'm here.
All right. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Hershey Hecht. I'm an administrator at the New Haven Hebrew Day School, or Southern Connecticut Hebrew Academy, as some may know.
Okay. And tell us, tell us where we stand as far as these temporary classrooms are concerned?
So, of course, when we got these years ago, plan was always time to expand, time to build, time to grow. And last, we extended it, you know, time the last year and a half, or two years, year and a half, that it's been, has been a crazy time, very hard to plan and foresee the future of what would be and what would come. That being said, we have done a lot in terms of space, current space, and planning for the future space. Hasn't exactly planned out in a way that we're able to get rid of the mobile classrooms just yet. This year, we took two multipurpose spaces and turned them into classrooms in our current building. We also rented space in another location in New Haven to open more classroom space for our preschool. That space wasn't big enough for the high school, which is currently occupying the mobile classrooms that we're talking about tonight. So we haven't been able to move them out of there yet, and it's really, we've been trying to deal with space issues in the building without even having to get -- without even being able to get to discussing when they can move back in. That being said, we have begun discussions with an architect and do have a proposal to start putting together a plan for adding space to our current facility. Obviously, hopefully, we'll be back in a couple months to talk to all of you about that. But again, we're trying to, on all avenues. We also looked into purchasing property in surrounding towns over this past year. None of them came to be. It's been a crazy time to buy property the last year and a half, but we're really exploring, trying to explore all options, and have taken steps to add space for this coming year, but unfortunately, it's not enough to be able to move out just yet.
Hi, Mr. Hecht. Do you have a -- I don't know if it's part of the request, but do you have a timeframe for --
The extension.
So it's tough to say, because, you know, on top of that, we're dealing with, if we do anything we do, whether it's buying, renting, whatever it is, is all dependent, mainly dependent on donations and donor fundraising and all that, which is also very hard to predict. Obviously, we are actively moving in that direction, have spoken to several of our donors. But, I mean, I guess what's...
There are no more temporary classrooms, right? Building?
Correct. It's...
Are there fewer, or?
No, everything's the same as it was.
Everything's the same, is what we gave the last extension.
Correct.
How was your enrollment?
Thank God enrollment's up, which is a good thing, but that creates problems.
Right.
It's good problems, but it's a problem.
Has anyone from the building department gone and just seen the condition of the temporary classrooms, or?
That's a good question.
I mean, at one point in time, I remember there was some concerns at the, I don't know concerns, but the fire marshal.
The fire marshal's there every year, I mean, for a yearly inspection.
Right. We had, as part of their last approval for the extension, it was a condition that everything was approved by the fire marshal and the building inspector to make sure that it was okay, which I'm assuming, if we were to grant another extension, would be the same condition. But I have not specifically spoken with Lucian, the building inspector, about going over there.
Right.
I mean, I'd like to get this, you know, in compliance at some point.
Right.
I mean, recognize it's been a tough couple of years with the virus, you know, I mean, your planning had to be affected to some extent.
Absolutely.
So there's no reason to, for us, I don't think, to be difficult on this, but...
No, but I would like them to have to come back after a year or two years. I don't want to make it open-ended, and I think we should make it absolutely a condition that Jack was saying, and Lucian, and for the fire marshal.
Yeah, and, you know, we want to move toward compliance.
Right.
Absolutely.
And they do also. They want to build their structure and their vision.
You can ask the teachers, it's not ideal.
Right. But it's... All right. Anything else you want to add?
That's it. I mean, obviously, thank you all for all that you do and keeping our town rolling, but hopefully we can...
Tom, did you have a question? No, I was just, all right.
I was just going to make the point that I don't see any point in shortening the duration.
No.
One year's probably a little unrealistic.
Yeah, it's not going to be enough to get things done.
Well, what did we do the last time? We did two years. What are you -- are you looking for two years? Do you think two years would be necessary, or?
I mean, I think if we're, ideally, in the next year, we hope to have a solution, but I think if we're being realistic, I think two years should be enough time to be able to find, one of those solutions should be able, you know, we should be able to find something for that.
All right.
Right, and if we grant it for two years, and in a year, they come back with a site plan?
Yeah, well, it's...
Right. We're moving ahead.
Right.
Right, okay. All right. All right, thank you very much. All right. Does somebody want to make a motion on this, or?
I'll move that we approve the request by the Hebrew Day School to extend the time limit to use and occupy the temporary classrooms for a two-year period, provided that the fire marshal and Lucian, the building inspector, approve the plan as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion to allow a further extension of the use of the temporary classrooms by New Haven Hebrew Day.
I was going to say, just before we have a vote, we should, we could do, because it expired August 1 of this year.
Right.
We could do August 1 of 2024.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
I will second that motion.
All right, motion's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. All right, good, very good. Good luck.
There.
Yes.
There's a little pond there.
Well, they're, uh... Videos will speak for itself.
So, so what you can see is the truck is basically following the pathways that are highlighted in the green and red, and it's, uh, right now it's in a forward movement, so it's going to show the maneuverability. And the reason why we had a little bit of a weird configuration on that proposed parking extension, I think this video shows why we did what we did on that, uh, for the truck to be able to pull in and, uh, get down to that, um, lower corner of the, of the additional parking area. So it's finished its forward motion, it's now going to do a backup operation, or the fir- the first backup operation to get into, into the loading dock for the addition.
Can everybody see this?
Mm-hmm.
Again, when I set it up, I took the worst case for the loading dock for being able to get in, which would be the loading dock all the way down on the bottom of the screen at that point. And the vehicle that's shown there is a WB forty, um, semi, semi tractor. And there's a vehicle getting to the, uh, lower load loading dock area.
If you want to see the, the other one, it's, it's a much simpler maneuver.
No.
I think the, I think the handout kind of shows that.
Sort of a learning curve for the, uh, truck driver.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that?
So it's probably a good thing I'm not driving one of those.
Yeah, it would take me a while.
Yeah, so I think with that, that basically wraps up, I think, the loose items that we had from the previous meeting. Uh, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Attorney Studer, and, uh, and he'll provide the commission with the closing arguments for, uh, you know, for the application.
All right, very good. Any questions for... Thank you. Just waiting for the popcorn to show up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Stephen Studer, and I'm with Bertram Moses. Our office is at seventy-five Broad Street, Milford, Connecticut. And, um, I will be very brief in my remarks tonight. I mean, I think we can close the public hearing as, uh, Mr. Wee Way said, uh, it was kept open, um, for essentially some information that you asked, requested on the truck turning movements, but more importantly, you were waiting for the...
The end of the weather.
Exactly, and that's done, and that was an approval, and, uh, for that we are, we are thankful. So I, I would just reiterate, without getting into all of the repetition of the details, that the proposal is for a permitted use. It's, it's an addition to an existing building that, uh, a company that has been a resident of, uh, of Orange for thirty-seven years approximately. It's allowing them to essentially consolidate their operations to, into Orange and to continue to act as, um, you know, as a good corporate citizen. Um, it, uh, it will generate, uh, additional, uh, tax revenues for the town, and, um, it meets all of your standards or requirements for a site plan approval and for a, um, a special permit. And again, just to reiterate, the special permit has really nothing to do with the use or the addition itself. It's really just for the, um, the minimal amount of fill that's required to relocate some of the parking from the rear of the building up to the front of the building, which I think is frankly is a much mu- more user-friendly and a better overall utilization of the site. So, uh, you know, we, we, we meet the standards set forth in your regulations, um, and, uh, we therefore request that you, um, respectfully request that you grant us an approval. Uh, time is of the essence because they'd like to, they're losing their leases, I think I mentioned before, and they have to be out of the building, uh, on Cascade Boulevard by, I think, January, February-ish of next year. So it's, uh, it's, it's incumbent upon them to get underway, and their intention is to get underway as soon as they've secured all their necessary approvals, with yours being obviously the foremost. So unless there's anything else for Mr. Wee Way or myself, we're going to thank you for your attention, and, uh, wish you a good evening.
All right, very good. Any, any questions for...
No.
Okay. All right, good, thank you. All right, uh, do any of the commissioners think we need to keep the public hearing open to have more information added to the record in order to decide the, the matter?
Not for me.
No, okay, me neither. So then with that, um, is there anybody in the public, uh, who wishes to speak with respect to this matter? No, okay. So I think then, uh, we're set to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
It's been seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
None opposed? All right, so the public hearing's closed. Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think this was pretty clean and straightforward and, you know, a perfectly good use.
Right. Wasn't to stay in the, in Orange.
Yeah.
Okay, extend their area.
Yeah.
And I think Steve said it very well.
Yeah, very, uh, easy application for us, and, uh, uh, with that, um, I guess we can entertain a motion to approve the, uh, the application.
We just, so it's on the record, we will need a bond for this application, but, so it's...
Yeah. So, and the other thing is, when we make the motion, I guess, you know, we're, we're considering all of the different applications collectively, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I'll cite them, but they're up to one, it's one motion.
It's, yeah, one motion.
One motion, all the, uh, all the, uh, the, uh, you know, the applications listed there. Okay.
I'll move that we approve the, uh, application for temporary special, uh, use, earth materials, move, removal and filling application. Uh, that's number one, application for a certification of soil erosion and sediment control measures and site plan application and an architectural standards supplement, all with regard to, uh, thirty-seven Robinson Boulevard in Orange.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application. Second? Yes.
Point of order, especially, I, I agree with you, true, but it's also a coastal area management site plan.
Was that part of it? I didn't see that.
I, it wasn't included on the, the notice, but it is there. It was...
Okay.
A requirement, just, it was essentially the one, uh, property in town that was in that coastal area.
Oh, no kidding, really?
Yeah.
All right, let's, let's start over again then.
Sure.
Do your motion include the coastal area?
I will, uh... That, that's okay. All right, so I'll do an applic- uh, I'll move that we approve the application for temporary special use of earth materials, removal and filling, uh, also approving the application for certification of soil erosion and sediment control measures and the site plan application, as well as the architectural standard supplement. Um, I'll also move that we approve the coastal area management, uh, application that had been submitted.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to approve all of the applications. We have a, the second of the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, four to zero to approve. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. That concludes our public hearings. Robin, you want to take five minutes to get your stuff?
Absolutely.
All right, well, let's, let's break for five minutes.
Okay.
Let's break for five minutes while Robin collects her microphones and stuff, and then we'll hear the, uh, final matter. All right, very good, we're back. Uh, the final item on our agenda this evening is an application for certification of soil erosion and sediment control measures and site plan application. It's submitted by the Racebrook Medical Center LLC, and this is on two thirty-five Boston Post Road. And in, in the, uh, the application is one to construct a twenty-four thousand square foot, two-story medical office building, and we have, uh, as part of the application, a lighting and architectural standard supplement. Uh, so, um, I think I will move over to that chair so that I can see the presentation behind me. Jeff, it's all yours.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's nice to be back here. My name is Jeffrey Gordon. I'm a principal with Cota Spotty and Associates doing business at, uh, two sixty-three Boston Post Road here in the town of Orange. Uh, with me this evening, I have, uh, Bob Wee Way from our office. Uh, he is our civil engineer. He will, uh, discuss drainage, uh, matters with us, and also we have, uh, Mr. Craig Chasse. He will be, uh, addressing some of the architectural, uh, items for us, uh, near the, uh, end of our program here. Uh, just to, uh, touch base on the property, something that, uh, whenever we try to describe this property to somebody, all we have to say is the trailer park. Uh, it's been around a long time. Um, the, uh, the owner, uh, Mr. Richard Telly and his team have been in possession of the property about fifteen years, and it takes that long to vacate a trailer park. There are a lot of rules and regulations and laws about vacating a trailer park, and it took quite some time. Uh, many of us remember the Orange Blossom Cafe, which was a couple of feet off the edge of the pavement there, and, and, uh, brought a lot of, uh, interesting color to the community. Uh, but after a long, uh, period of time, the, uh, the site has been vacated. Uh, we've done a number of studies for different potential users through the years. We, uh, had fast food restaurants, daycare, uh, apartment buildings, uh, strip retail. But what we think has, uh, come before you today is a real home run for the, uh, for the town. It is a medical office building, which will actually be utilizing, uh, tenants already in the town of Orange. Uh, the, um, Connecticut Orthopedic is located in two separate venues. They will be consolidating to this venue, uh, as well as, I believe Hartford Hospital will, uh, be taking a floor in the building as well. So it's proposed as a two-story medical office building. Again, the existing site, as you can see, uh, vacant now, but it was loaded with trailers at one point, and the thing that was interesting is there were a lot of encroachments. There were trailers that were over into the residential properties, onto the bank properties. There was a lot of encroachment. Uh, those have all obviously, uh, gone away, and there was no buffer to the residential properties, uh, to the northwest. That's something we're able to implement on this design. We are putting in a, a buffer area there, and, uh, we're going to be able to retain a couple of, uh, probably the only two worthwhile trees on the entire property we're going to be able to retain. The rest of them, we, I actually went out there into the temperature again, just to reiterate today, and, uh, the other trees are not worth saving, or they shouldn't be saved. Um, so we're going to do a good job with that, and right now the entire parcel is basically one big curb cut with pavement that comes right out to the street edge. So we're going to wind up with a, a nice, uh, landscape strip out front as well. So the site is, uh, approximately sixty-nine thousand square feet. It has a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage approximately. Uh, the old, the front setback of buildings were almost fifteen feet off the property line. We're going to be at eighty-five feet off the property line with the proposed building. There is a ten-foot wide utility easement, the entire frontage of the property, and another easement in the, uh, southwest corner of the property, down the lower left-hand corner. Um, so these are sewers and things of that nature. So we, uh, also have Webster Bank to the south and the west. And then we have a mixed-use, uh, well, mixed medical, commercial office building to the north, uh, side, the right side of the, uh, property. Uh, more commercial to the left side along the frontage, and then the residential to the rear.
Hey Jeff, what was the medical? Yeah. Where is, where's that? Is that the Ken Mike?
No, no, no.
No.
All the way to the right there, there's a very thin building. Uh, there's a chiropractor in there, and then they have a gun safety, uh, office in there on the second floor.
It's kind of hidden, you don't see it well from the road.
What's the address?
Um, I can look it up for you.
Oh, yeah, 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 right. Okay.
Now, if this is two thirty-five, that would be maybe like two twenty-seven or something of that major. I mean, it's, it's a very simple, it was a house that was extended in the back, and then it's got a big drive-it facade on it. Mr. Richard Telly and I were talking about it today, actually. It's not a bad-looking building, the only thing that makes it look bad is all those ugly trees that are half-dead in front of it. If we clear that out and do some nice landscaping along our edge there, I think that, uh, everybody's going to benefit on that as well. If we go on to the site plan, you can see that the building is, uh, is, um, arranged linear, front to back. With parking in the front, we have parking wrapping on the left side of the building, and on the right side of the building, we have an entrance drive that is a one-way drive. It's got some parallel parking spaces, and that driveway acts as a accessway to the dumpster in the, uh, back right-hand corner before the curve begins, right there. And also it gives us access because they have a mobile MRI trailer that fits on this site. So that gives the ability to come around. I don't, I don't have a nice animation of this, but it works, I mean...
Yeah.
He can do it, we know it.
He, he can do it, but he doesn't have to on this one. Uh, so they would enter on that, uh, right-hand driveway, they would loop around the back, back into that, uh, spot just onto the, uh, top end of the building there, and then they'd be able to exit out. So again, the driveway to the right side is an entrance only, the driveway to the left is an in and an out, and were there to be any kind of redevelopment on the Webster Bank, we would have a place where we could actually make a connection right opposite the driveway of our double, double-loaded parking area in the front.
Jeff, is, um, on the way out, it's going to be a one-way to the right, I assume?
Are you going to be able to take a left-hand turn exiting?
Well, we'll get into that, I mean...
Stay tuned.
Well, we, we built, we, uh, we, we built what they call a suicide lane in that area there, and, um...
They'll be needing an orthopedic.
It's an interesting... Well, we, we had, we had, we, we had some discussions about this with the traffic commission, um, you know, as to what would be the best, uh, way to go about this, and, um, and they were pretty satisfied. They, they made us come back with a full traffic report that even went down to the Racebrook intersection that pulled in the firelight development as well. And, uh, what that basically came up with is, uh, seven-tenths of a second additional waiting time on the turn movement. The levels of service don't change, so they were able to sign off once they got that amended, uh, information added on. So it's a twenty-four thousand square foot building, requires ninety-six parking spaces. We have ninety-six parking spaces. There, that would require four handicap parking spaces, one of which would be a van-accessible space. They're located, uh, you see the bump out there, that's the front entrance of the building. To the left of that, uh, is a very flat area, that's where the, uh, accessible parking spaces would be. Okay? Again, the back is, as you can see where the back of the parking lot is, that's the thirty-foot area that we now have pulled away from the residential, and we will show that we have some substantial landscaping on that. The, uh, lighting plan, let's go to that next. And so we have all the photo metrics there, and, uh, we have a number of pole lights, and then we have a number of, uh, of the, uh, wall packs along the back, but you can see the nightscape on the right-hand side of the picture that you know, you don't have the, you don't have any lighting trespass.
Was, was, it has to be, what, point-five foot candles at the property line?
In a commercial, yeah, but where, where, where...
Were, weren't there some locations? I thought I noted some locations in the southwestern, or southern, southern corner of the property. Right here. Four-point-six, three-point-seven.
Those are the candles?
Well, that's the blue.
I got one, I got one point on the Webster line right there, that looks like a zero-point-seven. But these are LEDs, so we can do a slight adjustment.
What's the one-point-eight above that?
Well, that's, that's further...
That's interior, right?
That's, that's more on the inside, there's a...
Okay, so...
A very, very fine one that's a little further back. But again, these are LED, uh, and these are adjustable, so if we need to put a houseside shield to get there, although in this area, I think, no harm, no foul, I'll be honest with you, but, uh, that could be adjusted in the field.
All right. But there were a few of them I noted.
Even on the other side.
I can't see them right at the moment, but...
Most important thing is, to me, is always the residential area and...
Right.
And not to create any hazards. And if there ever was a connection between them and Webster, they would have to relocate one of the light poles.
Yeah.
With this one there, it would have to, that would have to be relocated, were that to take place. Okay, um... The mounting height of the fixtures on the poles are twenty feet, and the, uh, wall packs are at twelve feet. So the wall packs, again, are on the back of the building there. On the landscaping plan, um, again, uh, I've got a mix of, uh, evergreens, flowering things, shrubby plants in the back, some shade trees, um, along the front, and along the back would be your biggest area for a snow shelf. So those are areas where I have a mix of, of hydrangeas, liriope's, uh, there's certain plants that you have where they kind of get a dieback on the, uh, flowering and the leafing in the wintertime, so I can dump snow on those and not worry about it. They come back every year, but the hydrangeas and the liriope especially are, are more seasonal, and then there's a mixture of, uh, a lot of colorful stuff, azaleas, phacetias, got the hydrangeas, um, more azaleas, viburnum, uh, and then we have a mixture of, uh, shade trees along the property line. Now, there's a gap you'll notice that runs along the length of the building on the right-hand side, and that is an accommodation of the fire marshal. Uh, they wanted us to have an area that we would put in a stone shoulder there, so they could put their extenders on their ladder truck onto that. So that took away any kind of planting that we had in that one area. Um, so that was an accommodation, uh, that we had, and relocated that plant material to the other side of the, the property as well, so we didn't diminish the planting. So it's a pretty substantial planting plan, and, uh, we think that the visibility coming up the post road looking across is going to be something that's going to be, uh, very, very good. Uh, going back to the traffic report, what was the primary concern originally was making left turns into the property, and that was a primary concern of the traffic commission, but, uh, the, the traffic analysis with the, uh, turning lane and the, uh, time of movements was such that we would still be at a very, very high level of service.
Jeff, there's a turning lane in that area of Orange.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that.
The turning, the turning lane comes down right about here, um, almost, and then it's...
I'm sorry, past, uh, the, um...
Well, you have, you have this, the suicide lane, and then it converts into a left-turn lane, uh, about halfway through the gas company, at the gas station property, well down the Webster site.
What's, what's the suicide lane? That's...
That means you can drive both directions, head-on.
Oh, oh, all right, right.
Both people get to make left turns in that same lane.
All right, so you're saying in front of this property?
Yeah, that basically, I get out of the line, it, uh, you have a flow of traffic, I move over to my left, and I wait for a break, and then I make my left turn, as opposed to people...
Heading toward West Haven?
And there's one going the other way.
Right.
And the one coming towards Milford, it's a double-turn lane until you get about halfway through the frontage of the mobile station property, in which case it becomes a exclusive left-turn lane to go down to the south Racebrook Road.
Okay.
So now I'm, I'm a little confused, not unusual, but, so when you're coming toward, um, I make a, a right from Racebrook Road, I make a left onto Post Road?
Right.
Okay, heading toward, uh, heading toward, uh, heading south on Racebrook. So I make a left onto the Post Road, and I want to make a left into this parcel?
So you're, now you're going north on the Post Road?
Correct.
Towards, towards West Haven?
Yes.
Then you're going to be able, as you get past the mobile station, getting near where Duchess is, you're going to be able to move over into that left lane?
Other side of the street, okay.
And you'll be able to sit there and wait for your opportunity to turn in.
To turn into either one of those...
Right, right.
So there is an extra lane there? There's a middle lane?
It's a shared lane for north and southbound.
That's what you're talking about, okay.
Right.
But it starts, I, I thought it started farther down the post, is what I was getting to.
No, okay.
And, and again, just, yeah, and I'm not sure I, going toward Milford, it's a right-hand turn.
But going toward Milford, they're heading south on the Post Road, right?
Going toward Milford, yeah, all right, see, that's right, you're not going across traffic at all, right there, okay.
Right, and also that, that shared lane going southbound stops becoming a shared lane and becomes an exclusive left-turn lane about halfway through the frontage of the, uh, mobile station. So the point being is making the left-hand turn, uh, into that, uh, there was really not a problem with the level of service, uh, doing that.
What about the left-hand turn coming out of there?
There, that's another story now. The southerly exit drive during the morning peak, that's this one down here, the morning peak, uh, to make a, and that's going to operate at a level of service B in the morning peak, but in the afternoon peak, it goes to level of service D. And it's, the report says these levels of service are considered acceptable for unsignalized driveways along a heavily traveled arterial roadway such as the Boston Post Road. So the real thing about that is, if someone's got to wait, they're going to be waiting internal on that property.
But you have ninety-six spaces.
No, but they're not all being used at the same time, and we're talking about a peak of, uh, an afternoon peak, and they don't operate seven days a week.
So, you know, we did...
And so around this, but you're saying that you can, there, you're, the traffic commission was okay with you making a left out of that parking lot?
Right, it's, it's showing an afternoon peak, left turn of thirty-four, um, thirty-four trips in the afternoon peak. That's over, that's a, a peak hour.
You're talking about, there's two things, there's the delay and the risk. Making that turn.
Because it can be backed up in the parking lot.
But that isn't to say that, that's not the case with, like, if you're coming out of Andini's, you're trying to go left.
Yeah.
That's not easy.
No, it's not, and as long as we have a, as long as we have an ability to do something about it, I was hoping that it was not going to be that, you know, I, I think it's just a problem waiting to happen.
Well, this is the use that you have, uh, over here. Now, there are other uses that are permitted uses that would certainly generate a lot more traffic than a use of this nature.
I have no problem with the use, obviously, I have a problem with the coming out and trying to make a left onto the Post Road.
Are there any solutions to the, I mean...
I mean, the safety committee didn't say no left turn, you know?
Make a left coming out of CVS, make a left, uh, pick, pick your curb cut on the Post Road.
They're all, they are all risky.
It's the Post Road.
Right next to it, yeah.
It'd be great if you can get an interconnection with Webster now.
Well...
Go through their lot, catch the light on Racebrook.
They might not be very happy to do that.
Right, to have all that...
Well, listen, they're on the Post Road, they're paying Post Road taxes, and to tell them now we're, we're going to take away your driveway, that might not go over too well.
Well, we're just going to add customers.
Yeah. But, you know, the, uh, other thing is, sometimes if you really, uh, held up a long time, you make the right. I think we've all done that.
So the other entry will be an entry for, for cars?
Yes.
In addition to the mobile MRI then?
Generally speaking, they're going to come in and they're going to make a left, but there are some parallel parking spaces along the back of the building, which would be primarily employees, but that's where the, the dumpster pickup will come straight back and have the dumpster, you see that tree in the upper right-hand corner?
Yep.
Right behind that is where the dumpster pad and the fenced-in area is. So they can come in, get it, grab it, and go, it doesn't block a parking space, and then also the, um, the, the mobile MRI truck or any kind of a delivery truck would, would use that. So you, you got a, you got a segregation of the general public traffic from service traffic. So, uh, again, it's, it's an interesting piece of property, uh, and what makes it an interesting prop- property is that there's a change in grade from the right-hand side down to the left-hand side. It's a few feet, it's a few feet from the back to the front corner there, and, uh, Mr. Wee Way worked his, uh, magic on the drainage here, and I'm going to allow him to, to address that. address that.
Just to give you a little bit of a background on the drainage patterns for the site, the entire property lies in the Indian River watershed. And within our site, there's a small drainage divide that picks up right about in this location here. So anything on this side is going to flow to the northwest towards the residential properties. Everything else is flowing diagonal towards the Boston Post Road. So it's approximately an 80/100 split, so 80% of the site right now presently flows down to the Boston Post Road, 20% of the site flows up towards the residential properties up in the back. Right now, there is no stormwater management or any type of stormwater management system on the property. So everything's there with the driveways, pavement and gravel areas, that's all surface flow that's leaving the site through basically the entire frontage and just getting down into the Boston Post Road and then flowing down towards Racebrook Road where it gets collected by a couple of catch basins down through that area there. Now, with respect to the topography, we've got about eight feet of relief through the property. We have a high point right up in this area at about approximate elevation 110. The low point on the property down at the southeast corner is approximately elevation 102. So you can kind of see that everything just kind of flows on a diagonal going down through that area there. The soils on the site, as they're classified by the NRCS, there's basically two soils that are present on the site. One is urban land and the second is an aguam, fine sandy loam. So obviously, the break would be, you know, it's pretty much right along that drainage divide again. And the urban land is basically signifies all the past use with the trailer park, you know, the paved areas, the gravel areas, the rooftops for the trailers, the old orange blossom. So it's basically an urban land-type development that's up in that area and it's been that way for a number of years. The site is also not located in any flood hazard area, it's designated as flood zone X on the existing FEMA maps. For the stormwater management, under the existing conditions or what was there while the trailer park was still active, there was approximately 35,000 square feet of impervious surface area for the existing facility. The proposed plan that's being presented to you tonight will bring that up to approximately 56,000 square feet of impervious surface area. So with that being said, there's going to be an increase. With that increase, typically you could expect to see increases in both peak rates and volumes of runoff and hence the need for our stormwater management plan, which we've provided with the proposed site plans. Stormwater management plan, we're basically designing to the Connecticut deep standards as well as the State of Connecticut MS4 permit with regards to runoff and tying it into the roadway systems. So under deep stormwater quality manual, there's basically four major components that we would typically design to, and those are water quality volume, groundwater recharge volume, peak rates of runoff and recharge for areas that are in a tidal wetland system, which is not applicable to this particular piece of property. So basically, we're dealing with three elements. So in the orders of magnitude with regards to the water quality, since this is a redevelopment project with a greater than 40% directly connected impervious area that is existing on site, that changes the classification or the way that we handle the water quality volume. So for this particular project, the water quality volume is based on the first half-inch of runoff from a particular rainfall event. And we're handling that through two, well, actually, three systems. We have one main system right in through here, which is going to be an underground gallery system. And that area is picking up all the paved area for the parking lot, for the parking area. The second system is a smaller one, we have a gallery system up in this area here, and that gallery system is basically designed to pick up all the roof area and collect it and discharge it into that system. We have two smaller systems at each of the driveway entrances. We've included a dry well and trench drain coming across the driveway aprons in that area there. In conversation with the state DOT, they had expressed some concerns with trying to minimize or eliminate all the surface runoff that presently exists on the property now going out to the Boston Post Road. So we have accommodated that to the extent that we can. So everything off of the site now is going to be picked up by any one of a number of catch basins and then discharged into the underground gallery system.
Bob, is the flow to the north, meaning the residential area, is going to be affected?
Yes, it will. The flow up and through here, as I pointed out before, the drainage divide came down through here. So we're actually shrinking the amount of drainage area that's going back to the residential and that's all going to be converted over to grass or landscape area where presently, if you looked at the existing conditions, there was the driveway up here and there were a number of trailers. So we're significantly reducing the amount of impervious surface area that would have gone to those residential properties. So there will be a significant reduction in runoff that goes up to those two particular areas or up against the residential.
But there's no provision to catch runoff back there? Because you just think by virtue of having the plantings, it'll just absorb?
Yeah, and again, when we look at doing the drainage or runoff calculations, we look at what's referred to as the runoff curve numbers. So the runoff curve number takes into account what your land uses are that are in that particular watershed. So again, when we compare the two and we look at the existing, the runoff curve number was very high up here because we had a substantial amount of pavement, you had all the roof areas, you have the gravel parking areas for each of the trailers. So once all that's removed, they go back in, they're going to do some grading, as shown on the grading plan, there'll be some minor grading that takes place up in there. There will be topsoil that's placed and then either the grass or other landscaping features. So when you take a look at the net impact to that, the curve number diminishes significantly from what's there presently with the existing conditions. So that by virtue of itself, when you run that through the computations, results in lower peak rate of runoff as well as a lower volume of runoff. And then we have, I guess I could probably take and hand these out too, which is basically, you know, a summary, it's an executive summary of our drainage report, which we submitted to Bob Britton. That report is probably 250, 260 pages. I don't think you need to be going through all that. The executive summary pretty much, you know, just sums up, you know, everything that's going on with the drainage systems. Now, we have another component at this particular catch basin. This catch basin is also going to be a water quality structure also. So this will provide treatment for all the runoff that's collected through the parking areas and treat that runoff before it's discharged to the galleries. Because, you know, typically, you know, the parking areas are going to be susceptible to more pollutants than what the roof runoff would generate up and through that area there. So you don't want runoff that's got a lot of silts or sediments getting into your gallery system and causing clogging and premature failure of the systems.
What happens with the gallery? I mean, it stays, the runoff stays there or it goes into the...
The galleries, the way that this system is set up and that'll get into, it's multifaceted. So the gallery systems are taking care of the water quality volume, which is basically that first half inch of runoff. So for those storms, all the flow is filling the galleries and there's no overflow out of the system at that point. So for those more common or more typical rainfall events, the water's going to get into the galleries where it's going to be trapped. Nope, I think, I think, no, okay.
Chris.
It should pop up. But it'll be where the water gets collected in that system, it'll be trapped in here and then allowed to infiltrate into the underlying soils.
Oh, okay.
And we...
So it doesn't go into the public stormwater?
Not the water quality event, no.
Okay.
No.
Oh, all right.
Right. So again, it's multifaceted, it's being, the galleries are set up to be handled for the water quality volume and then there's also a lot of extra capacity in both of these gallery systems that kicks in for the detention aspect. So it provides storage, which in turn is controlled through the control structure here or the pipe outlet that comes out of the yard drain here. We did a number of test pits on site, which are delineated here, and we did a number of deep tests as well as infiltration tests and that testing indicated that the soils are very agreeable to providing infiltration. The infiltration rates that we had on site through the testing range between five and 18 inches per hour. So in accordance with deep's manual, they provide us factor safety, they basically cut that in half. For the purposes of my calculations and running it through the routing diagrams and everything, I applied an additional safety factor. So where our infiltration rates are between five and 18 inches per hour, the calculations are assuming one inch per hour. So that's an extra built-in safety factor in terms of the calculations. So now with respect to the detention, so once the galleries fill up above the invert elevations coming out of the control structure here and here, the detention, or the galleries will continue to fill with water and be regulated by the pipe that comes out of this yard drain as well as the diversion or outlet control structure. So between those two devices, all this runoff that's being collected in here is, again, going to get further trapped to the point where these galleries get fully utilized and depending upon the particular rainfall event, it would either be fully contained in the galleries or back up through this pipe system and result in temporary ponding of the parking lot in through here. So for all storms up to the 50-year storm, everything is full, or actually, all the way up to the 100-year storm event, any backup is fully contained on site. For anything in excess of, I believe it was the, it's either the 10 or 25-year storm, this area of the parking would be susceptible to about six inches of ponding and that's for a very short period of time during the peak, during the peak of the runoff event. So the amount of time that this area would be expected to be ponded would be probably on an order of five to 10 minutes during the peak, during the peak of the storm. Because, you know, when we analyze the storms, the peak comes up, it's a 24-hour storm event, but the way that the hydrographs are set up and the way that the rainfall distribution comes out, the peak runoff or the peak amount of runoff occurs over a very short period of time, right, usually right around the 12th hour of that storm. So the peak comes up very quick and it diminishes very quick. So likewise, when you do the routing calculations on this, you can see that this area, if it does pond, it's ponded for a very short period of time. So that this comes back out and then these outlet control structures would basically allow the flow to come through again and then be discharged out into the catch basin that's out on the Boston Post Road. And then the last component, in accordance with the stormwater quality manual, is what's referred to as the groundwater recharge volume. And for this particular site, it's really not much of a concern for the simple reason that when we look at the NRCS soil designations, the majority of the property is identified as urban land. And when you look at the urban land, that's put into a category for a hydrologic soil group of D, which basically means with the urban land, it's got very high rates of runoff that are attributed to it. So when we look at groundwater recharge, what the manual basically says is that you want to try to put water back into the ground that mimics what's out there for existing conditions. So for this particular site, since we're working with a hydrologic soil group D, deep's manual says you don't have to do anything with groundwater recharge for that particular soil group. So we do have the upper portions of the site up in here, which were part of the aguam soils and those are hydrologic soil group B. So that does have a groundwater recharge component attributable to it. And I think when we did the calculations for that, the groundwater recharge volume was very low, it was 128 cubic feet was required. So that 128 cubic feet is certainly accommodated in either of these gallery systems, which have a much greater capacity to handle the flows up and through that area. So if you take a look at the executive summary, what you'll see is that we've basically provided for zero increase in peak rates of runoff as well as the volume for the two through 100-year storms. And as such, there should not be any negative impacts or negative stormwater impacts from the proposed development. And that basically summarizes the, you know, the stormwater management plan for the project. I'm not sure if Jeff has anything else that he wants to go over.
Has the town engineer signed off on it?
Yes, he has.
Okay, the only other thing I wanted to get on to before we do the architecture is sheet SP3, the soil erosion control, you have a certification on that and there's a sequence of constructions, there's a responsible party highlighted for that midnight phone call if the silt fence comes down and somebody's got to get out there and repair it. He's sitting right there in the blue shirt with the tie. So other than that, we have the typical hay bale filters, the construction entrance, the silt fence along the limits of disturbance, temporary stockpile of topsoil and silt sack out in the road there. So these are typical features based on the state guidelines for S and E measures. So the sequence of construction is probably the most important thing and if so required, we would have a pre-construction meeting on site with Jack and with the party there to make sure that everybody understands the ground rules and that they have the plans on site at all times, so.
Okay.
Pretty typical. All right, nothing further on the civil end, I can introduce Craig Chasse, he will go over the architecture.
Good evening, I'm Craig Chasse from Architectural Studio 3C in Harwinton, Connecticut. I'm here to represent them on the architecture for the building. It's basically what we're looking at, building is a two-story medical office building, it's 24,000 square feet. We have come up with a style that we feel is cohesive with the area that we're putting the building in with, into. We're using materials, we're using a terrible material on the base, we're presently calling out as a stone material. In the information that was given to you, we had done a breakdown of percentages for each type of material. We originally had, the area that we're now proposing as stone in that document called out as brick. Since then, the owners or the developers have asked that we change it to stone. They've also, they've also requested... They've also, they've also suggested that potentially where we're, we have our base of stone around the building shown, if there's a hardship in getting the stone, they may ask to substitute split face black for the perimeter other than the main entrance and the piece that faces the Post Road. So this is the west facade, we're calling it, it's actually the facade that's facing Racebrook Road. This is the south facade, which is facing the Boston Post Road. From, we have a band of stone that goes up to three feet, we have substantial amount of glass finestration. Our entrance is announced with a curtain wall section that allows for a nice atmosphere within the building as well as a good aesthetic on the exterior.
Excuse me, is that... Excuse me, is there going to be any signage or anything on the post road front?
Currently, we're just hinting at a band here and here of signage. Each tenant is going to apply for their own signage as a separate application, once they develop what their actual signage looks like. So they'll come back before you with that signage. But we will have some buildings mounted signage and we will also have a pylon sign that we're going to request. So the remainder of the facade from the waistband up is going to be ephesus material. We like it because of the color changeability and the ability to create some interesting details on the facade. But the stone itself is going to be the main focus. We do have canopies over each entrance that stick off the building.
Is that cultured stone?
No, no, it's natural. It's natural thin stone. So it's like a two-inch veneers what we're looking at, but it's a natural, natural stone.
Craig, what will be the location of the pylon sign? Do you have that?
It's a monument.
It's a monument sign. No, it's not a monument sign, sorry.
Yeah, where?
Anybody want to jump in for a second?
About?
Right over here. It's got to be 12 feet off the property line. I also have an easement there. This is where the landscape island at the end of the parking is, so we have a monument sign right about there.
No sightline issue with that?
No. Your regulations push it back far enough.
The other two facades of the building are very similar. This is the rear of the site that faces the residential area, so it's very similar in nature. It has the stone band around it. We have our stone for our entrance area that's going to be visible from there. The back face, which really isn't visible from the road, but it's visible from the medical tenant-like store. It's going to also have a stone base or durable material base, and then it's going to be ephesus with substantial amount of glazing. I don't know if there's anything really else to add to this. If you guys have any questions, I'm certainly here to answer.
Clearly, the facades that'll be facing Racebrook and Route 1 are more pleasing.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's, the other facades, we did, I mean, we still are doing variation of materials. We're trying to make them aesthetically acceptable, but obviously, we want our faces to face the main roads to be the more impressive faces.
Roof, it's a flat roof, obviously?
It's a flat roof, internal roof drains. There's a parapet around the entire building that conceals the mechanicals from view.
Craig, you mentioned split-faced block.
That was an option. More is a potential, if material availability is, right now, things are really spotty to get certain materials. The stone that they're proposing here and here, you know, at least around this main entrance box, this, if need be, if they have a hard time getting the amount of material they need and the time they needed, that's an option that they ask to explore.
It's a pretty substantial downgrade in architectural, losing all that stone or chunk of it?
What are you saying, Tom? This is what's being presented?
The split face block.
Architecture, the stone is a hell of a lot nicer looking than split-faced.
Block.
So what's being proposed?
Well, stone, but he said if they have an availability issue, they're going to switch to split-faced block.
For, just for a portion, I mean, we'd still have it here, but we're talking maybe, you know, the lobe piece on each side and across the back. But, you know, that's, again, subjective to availability.
Well, would that require that you, if you're going to change the plan, come back to the commission?
That's up to you as a commissioner.
Typically, if it's just an architectural supplement, it wouldn't, because it's not accompanied by a site plan or anything. If you're changing more than 50% of your facade, that's usually when an architectural supplement would kick in.
So this is less than 50%?
Less than 50%.
But it sounds like a substantial change, though.
Depends on availability of material.
Yeah, it's not a relatively small area on the bottom.
Right. You okay with that, Tom, or?
I am. Sometimes I just can't help myself.
I know. I mean, you want a really pretty building and natural stone would be preferred. And it is subject to the architectural standards.
Right. It still would be held to the same standards. Material is spotty these days.
Right.
The way of the world today, unfortunately.
I mean, you get things and lead times are insane.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any, no further questions?
I'll turn it back over to Jeff. If Jeff's all set, then I'd leave. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have sign-offs from other department heads?
Yes, sir.
Fire, engineering?
Mm-hmm.
You have the safety?
Yep. Got approval from traffic as well.
All right. Where's my agenda? Did I leave my agenda in that?
Yeah.
All right, then. Well, it's not a public hearing, we don't have to close the public hearing, I think. I think we can, I don't know, we need much more information in order to act on the application. It's a-
It's a permitted use.
Permitted use.
It's taking virtually a blighted property and putting a very attractive structure up. It's nice to retain business in town.
Yeah. And if, you know, it's a very well put together application, as usual, Jeff. Thank you.
Nice and clean.
So I mean, I don't really see any issues with it, and I don't think we need any more information, and I think all the department heads have signed off.
Yep.
Unless you want an animation on the MRI, you don't want that right side, but.
Now, we're going to need it for everyone, because we've seen one.
With you playing pickleball now, you'll need.
Probably.
All right, so I mean, that said, someone prepared to move that we, Mr. Richatelli, come to the podium, please.
Before we close this out, Gary Richatelli, Commercial Development Company, 200 Boston Post Road. I guess I would be remiss in not saying that when we originally acquired this property back in 2006, 16 years ago, it was a full-blown trailer park. It wasn't then and it isn't obviously now our intention to continue it and maintain it as a trailer park. But 2006 was right at the peak of the recession, and there weren't too many people looking for new buildings to move into. So we operated it all of this time, little by little, decreasing the amount of trailer occupants and mobile homes that were there, which is a huge, huge process to relocate them. I don't know if any of you remember the Ryder Trailer Park, which is where Walmart is now? But that was a 10-year project, 10 years to relocate 200 trailers into a separate location in Milford. So through all of this time, we utilized it very well to, little by little, gradually help the people relocate to other locations. And in the past couple of years, we've been working on the development of this medical building here. We have had interest from several other types of tenants, as Jeff indicated, some retail tenants, we've had some restaurant tenants, we've had a couple of daycare tenants, and it seemed like this particular use really fit the property better than all of them. So I just wanted to go on record and say that.
Very good.
Any other questions I can answer for anyone?
No.
I don't think so. I think we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then. So if someone's prepared to move that we approve the application, or applications plural, right?
Yeah. I'll move that we, you ready for a motion or no?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the application for certification of soil erosion and sediment control measures and site plan application as well submitted by Racebrook Medical Center LLC for the property known as 235 Boston Post Road to construct a 24,000-square-foot two-story medical office building. Lighting and, I move that we also approve the lighting and architectural standard supplement that has been submitted.
Okay. Need to add anything to that, Jack?
I think that's it.
All right. We have a motion to approve.
Sorry, we, obviously this will have to, to a bond as well.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the applications. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's 4-0 to approve. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
When are you going to start digging?
You're right.
Hopefully, soon, hopefully.
Yeah, we start, start tonight. All right, very good. Thank you. I now conclude our meeting.
Move to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.